You know it all?
Good afternoon, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Wilson County Board of Education to order. Please note that the meeting is being livestreamed through the Wilson County Schools YouTube channel. The public can also view the meeting through links on the Wilson County Schools Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter pages, and the Wilson County Schools website. Some of the members of ORETT are participating in the meeting using the Zoom video conferencing platform. And please know that face coverings are required to be worn during the board meeting. Masks can be found at the back of the room if any are needed. Members of the board, we ask for your approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Powell.
I move we approve the agenda for the work session of the Wilson County Board of Education.
Sir.
It has been moved by Mrs. Powell, seconded by Mr. Mercer, that the work session agenda be approved. What is your pleasure? All in favor, please respond with the response of aye. Those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. To the board and the members of the audience, please join us in the pledge of allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are here in the ongoing process for school utilization consideration. We have had, the past couple of work sessions, persons from ORETT who have been here for the discussion and presenting us information and data. We are happy to have them back with us today. Their first visit with us gave us a scenario. The board had the opportunity to raise questions and ask them to come back. We did ask them to come back with options. They did bring us a second option for consideration. And we sent them back again with other requests in regard to transportation and other issues and scenarios. And so we are here as part of that ongoing process. We thank you, Mr. Dudley, and staff for being with us yet again. And we look forward to hearing what it is that you're going to present to us. So, given that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mills for any comments that he has at this time before it goes over to personnel from ORETT. And thank the persons in the audience for coming to hear the discussions that we are having and for those who are watching us online. Dr. Mills?
Madam Chair, board members and others, Mr. Dudley and the others from ORETT have tried to address some of the questions from last time. We also have folks here from maintenance and transportation for some of the questions. And I'll either interject or we'll interject as we go through some of those questions come up about some of the ridership pieces as we go through. I've got an updated handout for the scenario analysis that doesn't cut off the last utilization column here for everybody too, so I'll pass those out in just a second.
All right.
I'll just ask Mr. Dudley, go ahead and start walking you through the presentation as it's on the screen.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Dr. Fitch, other members of the board. As Dr. Mills and Dr. Fitch have both mentioned, I'm Thomas Dudley with ORETT. I'm joined today by my colleague, Mr. Wallwright, and virtually by my colleague, Mr. Terry Carlson. For this afternoon's evening, this afternoon's meeting will be discussing the following topics. Looking at what's listed on the slide there. Start again by briefly introducing ourselves as ORETT, the Operations Research and Education Laboratory, part of the Institute for Transportation Research and Education housed on NC State Centennial Campus in Raleigh. Here's the shortlist of services that we provide related to student assignment and long-range facility planning. Now, the background, the context of this entire conversation, this discussion that we're going to be having this afternoon is the historic membership data that you see in front of you here, looking back over the previous six years. That's a decline of roughly 2,000 students over that time span. And with that in mind, what's being asked of you today is to consider potential solutions to your facility underutilization, including facility closure and student reassignment. Please review the exploratory scenarios that we have, and then also while you're doing that, please weigh your assignment priorities as we look through these scenarios. Next, for your reference, we have your current attendance boundaries at the elementary school level. And what you can see here is we've updated the current utilization percentage to use the most current student data that we were able to receive just a week or two ago. What you'll recall from the last time you saw this slide, it stated that at the elementary school level, your utilization is roughly ninety-six percent, or excuse me, sixty-five percent. So, that was the previous number based on the more recent student data. That percentage has gone down from sixty-five to sixty percent. So, again, that is the number of students divided by the capacity that you have at the elementary school level. And that's at your fourteen elementary schools. So, this first scenario was the one that we brought you the time before last. We're now calling it Scenario A. That was roughly two months ago, month and a half ago. And what this shows is the scenario of closing Stantonsburg, Winstead, and VIC. And given this scenario, your utilization goes from roughly sixty percent all the way up to seventy-four percent at the elementary school level. For this one, we provided a sort of zoomed-in version of the map, which also includes the lines indicating your current elementary school attendance zones. And you can see on this, you have the blue, which is Barnes, reaching to the southeast, serving the students that are currently being served by Stantonsburg. You have, over in the green, the green reaching down from Vincent Bynum into the Winstead attendance boundary. You see Hearn, the orange, reaching down into and absorbing all of the current VIC attendance boundary. And then assisting Vincent Bynum and Hearn, you have Wells reaching out to both the east and the west to facilitate assisting with those schools. Those we call ripple effects at the...
This dude is an absolute...
At the, at those schools. So, again, Wells stretching out in both directions. At this time, I'd like to point you to another board document that you have, the tables that look like this, which you should have printed versions of. We often call these scenario tables, or summary tables, anything like that.
Just a moment, please. Is this the sheet you're gonna...
Update, we've got cutoffs on the other side.
I'll just give that a minute to get passed out here. And here we have the scenario, the second scenario, Scenario B, which we also presented last time, which is the closure of Stantonsburg and Winstead. And what you'll see here is looking at a much simpler sort of assignment scenario where all of the current Winstead boundary goes to Vincent Bynum, all of the current Stantonsburg attendance boundary goes to Barnes. And in parallel to that scenario, I'd like to point your attention to the table, which again uses the most up-to-date student data that we have available. And you can see that in this scenario, for example, Vincent Bynum would have a utilization that's over a hundred percent if you were to move forward with this scenario. Previously...
Which scenario?
Yes, so we have Scenario B on the screen right now. And so Scenario B, the second table from the left in the Scenario table. Just give that a moment here. So, the other thing to note about these tables is that the schools that are being affected either by closure or by accepting students from other schools are bolded, so those rows are bold. So, in Scenario B, we have Barnes, Stantonsburg, Vincent Bynum, and Winstead are all in bold. And then accordingly, we have the number of students today that would be part of that attendance zone, and then the capacity of the school, and then the utilization of what would happen if those lines were in effect today and there were no transfers at all. And so, we obviously want to avoid a situation where a school becomes overcrowded. And so I want to point that to your attention with Vincent Bynum in this Scenario B. Really, there is that desire to, typically as we work with boards across the state, to not cut it too close either. And so you can see Barnes in this scenario is at ninety-four percent, which is actually fairly close to two-hundred percent. So, keeping that balance of utilization in mind is something that I'll be highlighting as we look at the additional scenarios here. And you will see on all of these additional slides, the utilization percentages again have been updated with the most recent data. Another scenario that we heard questions about last time, or that was requested last time, was what we're calling Scenario C. So, this is exploring the closure of Hearn instead of VIC, but also including the closures of Stantonsburg and Winstead. This is another scenario that brings the system-wide utilization to seventy-four percent. Let's see. Talking to the point of utilization again, you'll notice with this scenario, it's, it has three schools that are either at ninety-four or higher percent utilization. So, that becomes even more of a strain and even, even less, allowing you even less sort of wiggle room to be able to accommodate the students that you have at the specific school. The other scenario, the last scenario that we had, the fourth scenario, is looking at something very similar to Scenario B. So, this is Scenario B, but with part of that Stantonsburg attendance zone going to Lee Woodard. And so you can see the map there, system-wide utilization becoming sixty-eight percent, which is something we'll touch on in a moment. But what you'll also notice is looking at Scenario D in the table, this does a better job of balancing out the population at Barnes. And then also, Lee Woodard goes up to about eighty percent utilization, Barnes at roughly eighty percent utilization. So, this is definitely something to highlight, how well the utilization is balanced in this region, given Scenario D. In summary, we have these four scenarios, and there is some duplication about how the final district-wide utilization is calculated, two at seventy-four, two at sixty-eight. And that is due to, in part, because VIC and Hearn have almost identical capacities. And so two of the, anyway, two of the scenarios just are only different in that respect. In addition to the four scenarios that we've presented, there are some additional tools in our toolbox. And some of these came up during the last meeting, so I wanted to highlight the additional data that we're able to provide to you. The specific point came up about population density and sort of trying to symbolize that and give some way to convey how that population is distributed within your district. And there are multiple ways of getting at this. I don't feel this is the best way, but we have some additional slides that'll provide a little bit more detail here. So, the coloring is looking at your student populations where they are, basically students per square mile. And you can see here that there's very little population density outside of the city. And we'll provide a little bit more information than that, but that, to me, is sort of the first takeaway. If you really strain the symbology and try to pick out and show sort of the population densities of the more rural areas, you start to see individual student dots. And that's not something we're interested in showing. Adding on to that, we also have the version that includes where your current elementary school attendance boundaries are as well as supplemental information, including the development inventory that we've included as part of the project, and that's been added to since the initial data collection. So, this is new residential developments, and their lot or unit counts are included on this. We can provide a higher-resolution version of this if necessary, but you can see there are some developments, specifically in the northwest, the Jones attendance boundary, and then scattered other parts within the county as well. Let's see. Again, good context, but I think what may be more relevant is what we have on the next slide here and what has been printed out for you as well. Here, we see planning segments. This is the unit of analysis for us as we're doing our work in student assignment or long-range facility planning, and it's a foundational sort of tool that we use. And it's simply encapsulating neighborhoods, subdivisions, multifamily developments, more rural areas in a meaningful context, to be able to move these sort of areas around into different scenarios. And this is, in part, is what's built, the optimization scenarios that you've seen, which minimize travel distance. But another way that these come in handy is you can easily calculate the number of elementary school students that exist within each one of these planning segments. And so as you look to make your decisions related to facility closure, redistricting, reassignment, you can very quickly get a sense of, well, this little tiny planning segment has thirty students. This very large planning segment has two students. And so it gives you that, what I believe is that sense of population density that was being asked about during the last meeting. We do have a higher-resolution version of this, which has been sent, which includes street names, for example, and other relevant information. So, with that, we did also want to highlight some points related to community engagement. But at first, before getting into that, I just wanted to pause and see if there were questions or discussion related to any of the scenarios or any of the supplemental data that's been presented.
I'd like to go back to Scenario D. C and D are the new scenarios that you have added for us. And in your notation, it says in Scenario B that a portion of the Stantonsburg attendance zone is reassigned to Lee Woodard. So, is that sending some of them to Lee Woodard and some to Barnes? Is that what it is?
That is correct, yes.
And in that scenario... In that scenario, you are only adding about sixty students to the Lee Woodard population? Because you're showing, I'm sorry. You're showing two-thirty students with a capacity of two-ninety-one. So, I guess I have to go back to the original, and Lee Woodard population was originally one-fifty-nine in Scenario A. And so you moved it up to two-thirty in Scenario D. Is that correct?
You're interpreting that correctly, yes.
And otherwise, Lee Woodard has stayed at a one-fifty-nine in A, B, and C?
That's correct, yes.
I have a question.
Ms. Barnes?
And it's not your transportation question. What is the difference between transporting students from Stantonsburg to Barnes and from Stantonsburg to Lee Woodard? What's the timeframe or mileage?
We would have to, Ms. Barnes, we would, in order to be able to get an exact time or ride time, or even an exact number of students who would be on the bus, we'd have to have attendance boundaries. And then from those attendance boundaries, have those students routed on that bus. That would be the only way to be able to identify specific ride times. What we do know is that, you know, in proximity from Lee Woodard to Stantonsburg, if they are closer to Lee Woodard than they are, say, another school, then that would cut down on the ride time. Also, what we would do is any, any ride times, they're going to be, by state mandate, they can't be over ninety minutes. So, we would add another bus to any route that needed to be added to reduce the ride time. Ninety minutes, or even if we felt it was a threshold that was too long, you know, regardless of that. So, in order to find the exact loop or the exact distances, we would need to know which ones were the stops that we'd be making. And then from those stops, if they were going to Lee Woodard, we would route from there. But again, in proximity to one school from another, if they're closer to one than they are another, that would cut down on ride time for one to the other.
We went back and looked to address the board's questions about the routing in that piece. And you have to have the scenarios and the assignments in the TIM system to be able to run that analysis. And Danny and Ben actually reached out to the state-level TIM's department. And we talked with the folks at ORETT too. And their turnaround time would not allow us to get that in time for the December eighth meeting, nor probably before Christmas. And there would be a cost involved in doing that. And I would, I would suggest to the board that until you get down to one or two scenarios or a couple more fixed points, to wait on that, because it's taking your live setup and putting it in and then doing all the matching and the geocoding they have to do to make that work. And it could give you that analysis. And I know that's something you're going to look at, and the board made that clear, but there's no physically... Danny, who's in the audience, did take a look and looked at the ridership and the numbers of walkers and riders, and you can, I think that's given to you as a handout already, too. But, you know, if you were to assign some students to Lee Woodard, that would do a couple of things. One, it would allow Lee Woodard to be better utilized, because it is underutilized, and it is a school that the commissioners have given us some additional funds to retrofit and do some things to, to upgrade, so that would be a good use of the, the facility and the investment that's going there, plus the distance. If you look at the, the map, and I know they're, they're small because they're from planning segments, but if Thomas could pull up that PDF and zoom in on the, the segments, where the population is, is where they've made that assignment layer. For those students that would be assigned to Lee Woodard, they are closer, and so that bus route's going to be shorter than coming into the city. And then you've got the, the ability to, to do more at Lee Woodard with that. So you, you would have shorter rides. But I think it, until you get down to a couple of scenarios, is when the, the actual physical assignment layer's going in and doing the transportation analysis, I don't see it changing a whole lot from the, from some of the parts. If you were to look at some of the distances now, they would have to probably be, be cut a little bit from, from some of the extreme of the long runs. If you were on the ride at Stantonsburg coming into town, that would be one that I think Danny would tell you from transportation standpoint, they would have to take a look at, that would probably exceed any limits you would want as a parent, or as a student, or as an administrator to do, either way. So I didn't want the board to know we took, took all action we could to try and get that, but it's just, it's too tight. And I don't see spending that money personally. I don't think that's a good step. I'll do whatever you'd like, but until we get a little bit closer, because it just would be a lot of work for a little bit of gain until you get closer to one. The planning area numbers will show you kind of where the kids are when you look at that piece, but the sum at Lee Woodard does, does help you with some of the distances, definitely.
Did you provide the large format PDF map? I mean, because this is just a nice little jumble of little lines, and it makes no sense to me, because I'm not able to see where the, the boundaries are. For those who can look at this and know where, where the boundaries are, I'm personally not able to do that. Whatever that larger format, and if it's got street names, I mean, that would be very much appreciated. And if we have time to look at that before we meet again, because just having the opportunity to see this in front of us right now is, is foreign. And I'm not able to look at this and see where those new developments are coming in, the ones that Mr. Borcan mentioned, the last ones that you got from the planning department. I mean, it's, it's still like, I have no earthly idea. It's just a bunch of lines. I don't know if that's an issue with anybody else, but it certainly is an issue for me. Also, you know, it would be helpful, Dr. Mills, if, if, if we have these scenarios again, we need to have numbers that have our current student tops, so as to be able to compare what A, B, C, and D is, is showing for an increase, because we're just looking at the scenario. And I, I personally don't remember what our student capacity or what our utilization is in terms of the numbers of students at this point in time with those fourteen schools. So that's another piece of missing information, I think, that is very important.
I know that we received a map late this afternoon, so, and it's a high-density map. And I can go to our print shop and have large-format maps made for everyone to be able to see. And I, and I know, I know I can pull out the central part and put it on a separate map and do large maps, and I could even post those online if you ever want to see them as well, too. But, but they have prepared those, but they didn't arrive till late. So I'll, I'll do that for the board and others. I'll pull, I'll pull that out and rebuild those so you can see everything. And, and Thomas and his staff can add the, the current data from the school system on there, as well as we go.
I know that as we have looked at redistricting over the span of time, I know that we have had board members who could look at a map and say, oh, that's the railroad that such and such, and that's a certain area. I don't have that ability. Mr.?
I don't either.
Mr. Borcan, or any other members of the board, Ms. Boyet, Ms. Boyet?
Looking at the scenarios, where it was pointed out to us that Vincent Bonham is over a hundred percent capacity in B, C, and D, and then looking at Jones being only at fifty-one point three, Jones is our newest facility. So it, and looking at the maps, it would be fairly simple to shift some of, get our, get those, some of those at Vincent Bonham out, or our best facility at Jones, and be a wise use of that space.
And therefore, we cut down on that over one hundred percent utilization.
Right, and you stop the Vincent Bonham problem.
I think you can do all those, all those moves that you would like. I think the first, first step that, that we need to address for, or to move forward is, of these scenarios, is there one or two that you want to focus on, and then refining those utilization pieces around? Think about this as a wheel, as you turn it, it's, it's going to keep, again, it's a balloon, you push it, it's going to push out somewhere else. But adjusting it that way, certainly, that school's got plenty of capacity, and it's new, and it's built to handle that. So, but before I would start carving in those segments and doing that, I would want to know kind of the one or two. I think we need to kind of focus in on one or two of the scenarios to do that, and then, because that was something I brought up last time, too, taking a look at some of the ones around it, and I think you can get there, if that's what you wanted to do. But I think you, you may need to do that, too, adjust the utilization, which is, you know, when you're looking at fifty percent for some of these buildings, that's certainly under anything that you would want for the, the cost of what we're doing with it, and certainly the age of some of the buildings, some of these are new ones.
Ms. Barnes?
I didn't have any questions.
Mr. Boyet, I'm sorry, Mr. Borcan?
Yeah, so, so with the subdivisions that are coming, do we have any way to estimate or even, even guesstimate how many students will pick up, like in the Jones district and in the Stantonsburg district?
So as part of the initial project in, that concluded in 2020, we went through that thorough process of sort of disaggregating the big school-level forecast down to the neighborhood level, and that includes modeling student generation rates for new developments. Since then, there's been this trickle-in of additional developments, as, you know, as late as this morning. And so we've done the best we could to keep track of that behind the scenes, but that's one reason why we don't have another column on these scenario tables that says proposed, you know, or potential for five years from now, that type of thing. So if we feel comfortable right now saying, okay, we've got all the development data, let's lock it in, then we can go and rerun the model and come up with the assumptions necessary to be able to model exactly what you're saying and, and create a forecast going forward, five years.
Because like, the block that I'm looking at here for Stantonsburg, that's the, it's got, it says it's got fourteen students in it. That block is where the, the larger proposed subdivision will be going, on Sanpit, of, what, two-hundred-and-four houses? And, I mean, that, that number of fourteen is, I mean, it's certainly going to go up when that subdivision goes in. So yeah, I'd, I'd like to know some forecast numbers of the subdivisions that are coming, if, if that's at all possible.
Absolutely.
Is, is this what you're looking at?
It is.
Does everyone have this map?
Yes.
The planning, the planning segment map?
Right there.
And I will say that these, these maps are intended to be viewed either as PDFs or the large-scale ANCE format. That's, that's just something to be aware of.
This was just me giving you a handout.
Yeah, right, here's the fourteen number.
That's a little...
Yeah, and then you've got that subdivision right there.
Okay.
Two-hundred-and-four houses.
That was a subdivision.
Right under that number fourteen, that I can barely see.
I'll make that a big map.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's our Christmas present, is you.
I'm adept at large-format maps, but they are designed to be used electronically. But I thought you'd want a piece of paper, at least for today.
Well, a piece of paper helps, but to be able to read it.
But they'll, they'll hurt you.
See, I'll have to go home with my magnifying glass and look at this.
And to me, looking in the past is just as important as looking into the future, because, I mean, you know, Wilson's experiencing growth, in my opinion. So, yeah, I want, I want to know all aspects of what's going on.
Mr. Mercer?
I was looking at how low the utilization of Wells is in scenarios, and then how high it is in others, you know, depending. Is that because we're trying to keep it simple? You close this school, those students go here without having a lot of shifting? Because on the one side, if, if you take one of the scenarios where Wells is low, and Vincent Bonham is going to be too high, are they not adjacent somewhere? Where, I mean, and I know you were speaking earlier about working out some of that kind of things later, but kind of taking a distant look into it, if they are adjacent, then it would be, while you use the scenario where Vincent Bonham is high and Wells is low, there'd be a shift possibly.
I think, if I can interject, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Mr. Mercer, maybe what you're wanting to do then is, based on your last couple of questions and comments, maybe what you're wanting to do is, well, at the same time you're looking at some of these issues with consolidation, is there a, is there a, a level of utilization that you want to tell ORID to look for in the other schools? Because you're, you're creeping towards that each time we have these conversations. So as you, if you do that, then that's going to, that is going to get into some of the, the movement and the shifts that you're talking about. But is there a magic number that you want to shoot for so that it is more balanced? Because that's going to affect what happens with the, the borders and the, and the assignment layers for the closure of these other schools and the shifts. I mean, if you're going to do it, then I think you need to tell ORID, you know, it's fifty percent too low for some of these other schools. And so all these things are within a bubble, and so it's not going to make it any easier, but at the same time, there's, doing it in isolation is just going to extend the process.
Hearing what Mr. Mercer is saying...
Because I think that's what you're saying.
Does that, that sounds more like a redistricting rather than a school closure, as we have done in the past in moving students within the boundaries and, and the district's lines changing, rather than the discussion of closure.
There, there is a little of both in this, in this process. If you look at, just the watch on the screen right there, there are still some schools that cross over within an area, because one school can't handle all the population even after the reconfiguration. So you still have some of that within the city limits where your density is. So I think this is something the board needs to discuss about what it is that you're, you're trying to accomplish with this. If it's just sheer consolidation, I'll then, some of these things you don't want to touch right now, but you are going to need to. And, and I would ask ORID what they think about that, because they do this all the time.
Well...
That's just my, you know, having, having done this myself several times, it's, it's just a different process.
Yes, I don't disagree with you.
And I don't know which is best, I really don't.
But need to divide, but it's two of the most stressful things for boards and emotional things for the public is the redistricting and the school closure. And I'm looking at this, and to, if we're looking at balancing the schools as opposed to getting the overall occupancy or utilization, we might can improve the utilization, but still not have it balanced in a way that'll call for redistricting right on the heels of a closure. And I don't know if it's something you do all at one time, or, but it's difficult for everybody concerned. I, I know it's stressful for me to have to consider telling somebody that school that they love and been a part of their family is considering being closed or will be closed, or say, somebody's been going to a particular school, they're going to have to change the school to go to. That's, that's difficult on everybody, but our objective should be, and I think is, what's best for the county as a system. So I, I just saw that and was wondering if, you know, also you've got, I also thought about what Mr. Boyet had said about our newest, and, school is down at the fifty-one something utilization. And when you look at Jones, Vincent Bonham, and Winston, their proximity is close, but I, I hesitate to suggest and wouldn't to have someone leave Winston and skip Vincent Bonham district to go to Jones. You know, drive by a school, that's, that sounds wrong. So, I mean, it was, mine was an observation more than a question, I think, it's...
Mr. Green?
I don't have anything necessarily meaningful to add. I agree with Mr. Borcan, that we need to see some sort of prognostication or some sort of, you know, comparable. You know, we, we have an idea of what's going on in various parts of the county, and, you know, there's got to be some way to get some sort of projection, or comparable projection based on other developments in other areas as to how many students a certain development will yield. And I know that it seems like we might be spinning around in circles, but I, you know, we've got, we know what the numbers are now, but part of this is that we've got a plan for the district in the future.
Mrs. Powell?
I agree with Mr. Borcan also. My question is, how can we determine the best scenario when there's growth going in certain areas, like Stantonsburg area? And also, community involvement. Thinking about over, you know, big elementary school, there's a seeds of hope that is a big community involvement in that area. And they've done a lot in that community, they're a great asset to our Hispanic population. They have actually had committee works, they have a garden over there, it's beautiful. And they also had workshops, they've done with Hispanic population, helping with programs like CSOW, and just so they can understand. Because we're looking at community and what we're doing to those communities, and we're thinking about which scenario we actually want to choose. And I'm sitting here wondering, I said, I really can't do it, because it's difficult, even looking at the numbers. Even looking at the numbers, it's still difficult to determine that. And then I have a map I can't see because my vision is not that great. Thank you, Dr. Fitch, for sending me this a bit larger. But yeah, this is very difficult. And then looking at the community involvement, I'm looking, I know we hadn't discussed that, but we're having meetings at three area high schools, and I'm thinking, wonder why we're not having it at the schools in those particular areas instead of having it at the high schools? That's just a question I have. I won't go further.
Might be due to capacity and being able to have availability of space for all of the communities to be able to go.
I guess I'm thinking about the people in that community that may not be able to get out to hunt or bike or bedding field.
But you know, Vic's gym is one of the biggest gyms in the county.
Who is? The high school gym.
They have not only the gym, but they also have a junior auditorium at Vic.
That was the recommendation of ORED. That doesn't mean the board couldn't do something different, but I would suggest that that's probably not even on your calendar right now of where we are with process because it sounds, if I can summarize, I think, I'd like to so I can know what we're going to be asking them about and so we're on track. We did a forecast, it's been over a year and a half ago, for membership and based on the subdivisions that we had laying in study as well as a forecast out. But what I've heard from you all today is, are you at a point where you would like to see another forecast with some of the newer subdivisions? I mean, again, we can reapply that, and ORED can, with the current assignment data that we have for our students. And you can have that data to plan from. They're still going to plan from our current year data. You're still going to have the impact from COVID, whatever that was, that no one will know over the last year and a half. But estimating what the impact of neighborhoods will be and the attendance and school-aged children, they do have a formula for that they can put in there. And we can add as many as we know about, but at some point, you're going to have to make a lock on that and go. So I mean, that's something if you want to talk about, then we can certainly go back and that's something we'll need to contract with them to do and do again. But I think if that's where you are, that's where you're going to need to start from again. But if we do that, then I think we need to work quickly after that analysis because it's a moving target with the constant growth. But the issue we saw from the first time was there's plenty of capacity everywhere for the next 10 years. And only about four schools had any issues with capacity across the next 10 years. So I don't know that the pattern will change. It may change a little bit for an individual school here and there, but the overall pattern, I don't think it's going to change based on what your base rates are and everything else. And again, I'm not a demographer in the numbers or the numbers, but do keep that in mind. It may pinpoint some things in certain areas because of the subdivisions, but I don't think your pattern's going to change. That's just my two cents.
I have a question, I guess, just from looking at all of the different scenarios. Are you all suggesting that we choose one of the four scenarios to, the purpose of having all of the different scenarios? Are you giving us a choice or we have to make a decision, I guess?
So the way that we've seen the process work in other districts is typically like what you've seen so far, where we start with a scenario or two, gather feedback from the board directly through similar meetings, is what we're having now. That number of scenarios increases and we explore different avenues. But before taking it sort of that next step and going out into community meetings, the board would typically reduce that larger number of scenarios down based on some of the data or other analysis or other concerns that they have. And it becomes, I think, as a member of the community, it becomes a lot easier to conceptualize the differences between one or two scenarios versus four plus. That's certainly been our experience.
What is your pleasure, Dr. Mills', hearing forecast data?
Yeah, we can do whatever you like. We just need to know.
I think that'd be good information to have. Also, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We've got a sheet with four scenarios. Would anybody else be interested in having, not an additional scenario, but just the information as it is right now? Is that, did you?
She did. I can get that from their baseline files and add that, too. And I can post this whenever you like or share it back out, however you would like. I have no problems. As well as, and again, the maps to ORED's defense, those are not supposed to be read at this level print, but I got them from a late day, so I tend to bring them to you. But I will print you larger hand maps and large format maps so you can have those and so you can have them available to you. And I'll put those in a format on the website if you'd like to, just because it is information because it's just planning segments in some of your current lines.
That was going to be my question, Dr. Mills. Does, do the parents in the community have access to?
Well, I don't think you've really had enough until now to really lay anything out. Now you've got several scenarios and with the scenario tables and these drafts and this presentation and all, I can start a page that will keep a running record of everything and do that. And I've done that before and I'm glad to do that.
And I know you're saying on the web, but you know, I'm going to ask.
And I'll make copies available here and in a few locations, I'll fix.
All right. I appreciate that.
In large format and good old paper.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
I'll do that, too.
You knew that was coming, didn't you?
Yeah, I know how to work the big plotter at the bus garage, so I can do that, too.
Are there other points that you want to have made? And please feel free to, in a few moments, pull out your calendars. Because it sounds like we're going to do this again.
So what I'm hearing the board direction for ORED is, you would like to take the new subdivisions that they have been able to identify and that we know about and can put in the formula and see what it would take to do another forecast across K5 or across K12. And that is different. Last time we did the K12, were you just focusing on K5?
Well, if I focus, are we going to be moving, the next question then, is are we going to be moving from elementary? Because this is what the focus of this particular portion is. If this is where we're going, I think it would just need to be the K5.
I would keep it simple at this point because unless you're going to do anything with middle and high schools, which you didn't mention, but in terms of your timeframe, it's December, and so that data is going to be old by the time you do it, I would stick with K5 because turnaround time, and this is not anything that's even on ORED's calendar, so I'll have to follow back up with the board to let you know about that. They're great to work with, but they're also working with other boards at the same time. So I'll follow back up with you about that. But I would stick with K5 for turnaround time and for cost, quite frankly.
Because if they have done anything in K12 and we're not utilizing that at this point in time, it would seem more reasonable for K5.
The longer it ages, the less reliable it's going to be over time to do some of this. But for what, again, for what you're doing, it's always going to be a moving target. So we need to work quickly once you do that.
Is everybody in agreement that we're looking at K5?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So forecast data for K5 with the inclusion of new subdivisions that have been brought to the attention and that may now be on the planning docket.
And after that, I just think we need to come back and meet and talk because I'm not quite sure where the next step is because you've got some scenarios, but I think you want to look at that data first. So and again, I've got to talk to the folks that are worried about the next steps for that and get on their calendar. And so I have some homework to do before we can go any further based on what you want to see first because there really is no more scenario analysis or anything until you look at that from what you're seeing.
Other points, board members?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Boyet?
I'd like to say that we'd like the public and everyone to know that all seven of us sitting up here have one goal in mind, and that is for the children in Wilson County to be able to attend schools at the very best facilities that we can provide for them. And when you look at losing 2,000 students over a period of time, I don't know what it is now, but when I, the data, a couple of years ago, the average school size was 5, 550 at the elementary level. That's four schools or, you know, that we have or almost equivalent. So these choices aren't any easier for us, and we're not in it to hurt anybody or to do anything except what is best for the children. And yes, our feelings, I know you have to, when you go into this office, you expect to get your feelings hurt and all of those kinds of things, but I just felt the need to say, we're not in it to hurt anyone. We want every child, whether they live in Stantonsburg or Gardeners or wherever, to be in the very best facility that they can be in. And we have county commissioners that are saying, we're ready to fix our schools, tell us where, you know, how we can finish this money. So our hearts are in the right places.
Mrs. Barnes?
And my comment is similar because I think the public needs to know that we are in a fact finding stage because I think the word is out that we are going to automatically, I hear it from our state, you get ready to close three schools. We haven't made any decisions right now to close anything. We're just looking at facts. And I think ORED has done a good job. When I look back over, I spent all morning just reading over from the beginning when you all started to now, looking at all the work you put in, and you're using data that we don't have access to. So we've got to depend on someone to come in and do it for us. But we are not making any decisions now, and I just want the public to know that. We're in a fact finding stage so we can make the best decision for all of our children.
Okay. So let me direct this now to, unless there are other comments board members want to make. So what kind of timeframe do we now need, given what we're asking now, given holiday is coming up, given that you all are working with other school districts as well? What kind of timeframe can we realistically look at to consider coming back together to continue this discussion?
Would the board chair and board members allow me to talk to ORED before Monday's meeting?
Yes.
And follow back up, considering this is a slight detour in the road to planning?
Absolutely.
Is that fair?
Board members, you're in agreement with that?
Y'all agree with that?
You'll have conversation prior to our meeting on Monday night? Are there any other directives that we need to give or other thoughts that we need to share at this point in time? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair.
Sir, I can.
It has been moved by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Mercer, that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of eye. Those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. We are now adjourned. Thank you so much.